We did some troubleshooting and putting notes together and trying to figure out what they wanted to do[529.20-530.64][S12] and kind of home it in a little bit.[530.96-539.88][S12] And after going around town and taking walks, they really decided that they wanted to make their town look nicer. And even just, we would step out on our back porch and we would see litter hanging from our trees. So the girls decided that they wanted to try to eliminate plastic bags in the town of Braintree. This is eventually going to be a statewide mandate.[557.84-560.88][S12] The girls have done quite a bit of research.[560.88-569.64][S12] They've learned how to navigate some not-so-easy groups and they've been well received by other groups.[569.88-578.64][S12] They did spend a day with Senator Timelty, Senator Keenan, and Senator Boncor in the State House.[579.00-581.16][S12] So they've been, they've been working on this quite a long time.[581.16-583.64][S12] They reached out to the town recyclable center.[584.60-590.32][S12] They taught Girl Scout troops how to make their own bags using recycled material.[590.52-594.32][S12] They collected T-shirts and showed them then how to do that.[594.32-597.91][S12] During COVID, we met out in the cold with our masks in the garage.[597.91-601.04][S12] So we, you know, we were improvising as much as we could.[601.16-605.72][S12] But they persevered and they were able to achieve their silver award.[605.72-610.64][S12] So the silver award's the highest level of award that a cadet can receive in Girl Scouts.[610.64-613.16][S12] And it takes roughly about three years to achieve that.[613.52-618.84][S12] They have to facilitate a take action project and they have to really own it.[618.84-622.52][S12] They have to, they have to reach out to the community.[622.52-627.44][S12] They have to do the research and try to reach out to as many people as they could.[627.44-634.28][S12] And that was, that was a little tricky to navigate, especially when we hit COVID and they weren't able to see a lot of people in person.[634.28-636.04][S12] Luckily, they did some of it ahead of time.
Well, thank you so much for that presentation. And I also want to thank you for your commitment to sticking with this because it has been over a year and a half since you've been before us in the subcommittee. Or maybe it was at the -- but a lot of people would have given up on the issue or topic. And you young ladies did not do that. And I think you've actually added to your presentations since you were here before us. So I can't stress enough like your commitment and your leadership. Like I know we're going to be seeing you in the future doing bigger and better things here in Braintree. Let me ask you this. What has been the -- have you -- you've been going around town and getting feedback from people? Like what are you hearing?
We've obviously talked with our friends and stuff and people around. We've talked with other troops and most people that we have talked with are okay with having plastic bags gone as it's just another thing that they're just throwing away. It's going to the dump somewhere into our own environment flying out the trash bags, just polluting everything.
Okay. How about either one of you? Any other feedback you're getting?
So of course with everything, there's always going to be a negative effect to everything. But other than the cost of the plastic bags, that has been like really the only thing that has been negative about this. People really want to change the environment or make it help -- well, help it basically. So I think more people are with it now. But of course, when we first started, it was a lot of people like didn't like the idea of that. They weren't accepting of it. But now they are.
Great. To add to them, at the beginning, most people don't enjoy change. So it's hard for them to see that we are trying to get rid of plastic bags. But eventually, people will come around and hopefully will enjoy the idea of getting rid of plastic bags and using paper bags.
Excellent. I think you all have some -- I think that's the consensus from what I'm hearing. You're absolutely right. People don't like change, but once they embrace it, they come to agree with it. I was going to have Jeff Coons, and I see some hands raised. We're going to get to you in a second. Jeff Coons here tonight, who as you mentioned, I know you have spoken to him. He is the head of our recycling. He could not be here with us tonight.
This is not handing a hope.
So yes, I know you've all spoken with him. That's a great partnership. It is going to -- it is in with ordinance and rules. Council Ringus is the chair of that committee. So it's going to be brought up again in that committee. Hopefully Jeff Coons will be there. We will keep you all posted of when that meeting is going to occur. You do not have to attend, but we would love to have you in conjunction with Jeff Coons, and then it will come back to the council for us.
I think pre-COVID --
Just step up to the mic if you could.
Pre-COVID, Lilly and I actually spoke to one of the directors from the Braintree Conservation as well, had a discussion with them. So they, you know, as they walked around town, they tried to reach out to different people. As the girls had said, when they -- when this first came forward, they were a little crushed because there were some unkind words. But I said, that's all part of change and people learning to adapt to that. So it was -- they've actually learned a lot from the different aspects of people's input throughout this project, which has been good.
Great, great. Thank you. Council Ryan, thank you.
Thank you. It's really some of the numbers that you put up there, you know, a plastic bag is used for 25 minutes of its useful life. That's really kind of hits home. And as a single parent, I do all the shopping in my house. And I'm trying not to use plastic bags. I try to bring all my bags and some -- most of the time, I bring my shopping bags with me. Sometimes I don't, and I'm still learning how to do it. And it's change and change is, you know, nothing's constant except change. But it's hard. But just seeing the numbers, it's staggering, the solid waste that's created from plastic bags. So I wanted to just commend you young ladies for taking on this task. It's very admirable. And when I see young people like you coming before us in Braintree, it's just another thing that makes the town of Braintree great, that we have young people getting involved for this environmental cause. And I thank you so much and keep up the good work. And if it was easy, it would have been done a long time ago. And it's not easy, so good work. Thank you.
Council Mackin.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank you for coming in. That was an excellent presentation. I'm very impressed. You did great research. You all spoke very well. You had excellent slides. And yes, change can be difficult, but you know, I think you are right. I'm happy to support you. And I can't speak for my other councils, but I think most of us, if we weren't there, you'd definitely sway us. So excellent job. Thank you.
Council Flaherty.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank you so much for coming forward. It was such a pleasure to listen to you speak tonight. And I'd like to comment that our local government works better when people participate. And here you guys are, not even old enough yet to vote, but you're already stepping up to the plate to, you know, take action on something that you feel really strongly about. And you've done an excellent, excellent job at that. And you know, I think it's something to be proud of. I'm proud of you for what you've done. And I have a daughter who has been a Girl Scout for many years, and she's younger than you. And you've worked with lots of Girl Scouts who are younger than you, I think. And you know, they're watching. They're watching you. And I know that they will remember, you know, oh, remember when those big girls came and they told us about how it was important for us not to litter and how the things we can do to reduce our waste? They'll remember that. So that's a very worthy thing that you've done. And the last thing I'll say is that I started using reusable bags in the late 90s. And I would bring my bag to the cashier and they would look at me like, what do I even do with that? They would already have stuff in the plastic bag, right? Because that was their routine. And I would be like, no, can you please use this? And they would be like, okay. And now I have a giant collection and they always know what to do with it. And sometimes we talk about, oh, look at this bag. Where did you get that? I love that one. And then I tell them because it's almost always from a school, like a fundraiser. So anyway, thank you so much for speaking tonight. I enjoyed that and I'm happy to support you.
Thank you. Council Sasha.
Thank you for coming in again. And you all did a great job with the presentation again. And I hope that you will come join the committee hearings if you can because you are kind of the voice for this now in Braintree. And your voices matter. Nobody else has all of those facts at their fingertips, at their disposal to make the case for this. So I hope you will continue to be a part of this as it goes through the process. And lastly, I just wanted to say congratulations on the Silver Award. It is rare that we have kids or young adults come before the council to be recognized for something. And whenever they are, as you are tonight, I think to myself, I never did anything that impressive when I was young. So congratulations and job well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Ringus.
Congratulations and thank you. I think like many folks have said already tonight, you've showed commitment across a variety of sort of topics. One, commitment to the Girl Scouts and sort of achieving this award. So congratulations for that. Commitment to this project, I think when it was first brought up, it was just pre-COVID. And then COVID hit and there was various COVID restrictions that were placed in terms of using reusable items. So the governor advanced, you weren't allowed to use reusable bags, reusable mugs. But that has all been lifted. And it's great that you guys continued to advocate on behalf of this project and push it forward. I chair the Ordinance and Rules Committee and we'll be taking that up at our next meeting. So I hope like some of the other councils said, that you guys will attend. You're not required, but I hope that you'll be there. And there's going to be some other groups represented. And I think also you showed a commitment to when you felt some resistance. I think your troop leader indicated that, you know, some folks maybe had some unkind words. And I think various things you're going to do in life, you're going to run up against people that try to put a hurdle in your way or just who don't understand what you're doing and sort of push back. And I think it's great that you guys were able to address that and stay committed to your task and push forward to its conclusion. So again, congratulations. Thank you. And I hope that we'll see you at an ordinance and rules committee soon.
Thank you. Council Erica.
Yeah, thank you all again. I echo all the sentiments of my colleagues on the council and want to relay. I know I've heard from many residents been asking me about a plastic bag ban, and you have been ahead of the curve. I have relayed to them, the Girl Scouts are working on it. I promise it's going to come before the council. And you should be really proud of yourself. And nothing makes me happier than to be able to say a group of students is bringing this before the council. So thank you for your tenacity and for keeping this alive for all of us and for the town of Braintree. And congratulations. So looking forward to seeing you again.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Erica. Any final words, comments?
Just make it happen.
Right. Okay, we do have something for you, so stay there. So Lilly Hallahan, Sophia Fitzgerald, did you -- oh, sorry. Okay. And Sabrina Garcia. We have here tonight a Braintree Town Council commendation for each of you. It reads, "Is recognized by the Braintree Town Council for attaining the Girl Scout's Silver Award, which is the highest honor a cadet can achieve. Congratulations on your commitment to making a difference and best of luck in your future endeavors." It's signed by each of us. It has each of your names. So if you want to come up, all of you come up here, we can congratulate you. And yes, how about a round of applause for these ladies? Counselors, yet we're close. Okay, moving on to approval minutes of June 15th, 2021 and July 13th, 2021. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please.
Council Erica.
Yes.
Council Connors is absent. Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume.
Aye.
Council Mackin.
Aye.
Council O'Brien.
Aye.
Council Ringus.
Aye.
Council Ryan.
Aye.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
That's eight in favor, one absent.
Thank you. That is unanimous. Moving on to old business, item 21028, the mayor, ordinance to establish an anti-blite program or take up any action related thereto. This is a public hearing. We're going to continue the table to September 21st, 2021, if the vote so moves that way. Is there a motion to continue to table order 21028 to September 21st, 2021?
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please.
Council Erica.
Yes.
Council Connors is absent.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume.
Aye.
Council Mackin.
Aye.
Council O'Brien.
Aye.
Council Ringus.
Aye.
Council Ryan.
Aye.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
Eight in favor, one absent.
That is unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to item 21036, the mayor, transportation infrastructure enhancement for the trust fund or take up any action relative thereto. This is a public hearing. Is there a motion to open the public hearing on order 21036?
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please.
Council Erica.
Yes.
Council Connors is absent.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume.
Aye.
Council Mackin.
Aye.
Council O'Brien.
Aye.
Council Ringus.
Aye.
Council Ryan.
Aye.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
That's eight in favor, one absent.
Thank you. That is unanimous. Moving on to old business, item 21028, the mayor, ordinance to establish an anti-blite program or take up any action related thereto. This is a public hearing. We're going to continue the table to September 21st, 2021, if the vote so moves that way. Is there a motion to continue to table order 21028 to September 21st, 2021?
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please.
Council Erica.
Yes.
Council Connors is absent.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume.
Aye.
Council Mackin.
Aye.
Council O'Brien.
Aye.
Council Ringus.
Aye.
Council Ryan.
Aye.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
Eight in favor, one absent.
That is unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to item 21036, the mayor, transportation infrastructure enhancement for the trust fund or take up any action relative thereto. This is a public hearing. Is there a motion to open the public hearing on order 21036?
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please.
Council Erica.
Yes.
Council Connors is absent.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume.
Aye.
Council Mackin.
Aye.
Council O'Brien.
Aye.
Council Ringus.
Aye.
Council Ryan.
Aye.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
Eight in favor, one absent.
That is unanimous. And I will refer to Council Erica, who is the chairwoman of Ways and Means for your recommendation to the full council.
Thank you, President Hume. The Ways and Means Committee met back in August. We are sending this to the full council with a unanimous favorable recommendation. This is about a little more than $22,000 that Braintree is receiving from the state. It accounts for the impact on our roads, bridges, and other transportation infrastructure caused by rideshare trips. For every rideshare trip, there is a 20 cent surcharge. And based on a formula for more than 223,000 rides that originated in Braintree in 2020, our share from the fund is about $22,000. So that'll be a nice little addition to help renovate our roads.
Thank you, Council Erica. Anybody from the mayor's office wish to speak? I know we have Ed Spelman, Director of Municipal Finance, here with us tonight. Mr. Spelman, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. As the council has said, this, we're requesting the authorization to spend these funds for designated highway purposes. And just a little bit of history, this is the fourth year that the funds have been allocated to Braintree. This year for fiscal calendar year '20, the numbers were down significantly. The number of trips and the revenue for the town received was approximately 62% lower than the prior year. Last year, we were here and the amount that was appropriated was $50,219 due to COVID. This year, the amount is the $22,345. And if there are any questions or...
Anybody from the council have any questions for Director Spelman? No questions. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this? Seeing none. Thank you, Director Spelman.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan. Clerk Samino, a roll call vote, please.
Council Erica.
Yes.
Council Connors is absent.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume.
Aye.
Council Mackin.
Aye.
Council O'Brien.
Aye.
Council Ringus.
Aye.
Council Ryan.
Aye.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
Eight in favor, one absent.
That is unanimous. Thank you. Is there a motion for order 21036? Council Ringus.
Yes, I would move that the sum of $22,374.50 received from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Transportation Infrastructure Enhancement Trust Fund be appropriated to the Department of Public Works to be spent in accordance with 2016, Chapter 187, Section 8CI.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please.
Council Erica.
Yes.
Council Connors is absent.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume.
Aye.
Council Mackin.
Aye.
Council O'Brien.
Aye.
Council Ringus.
Aye.
Council Ryan.
Aye.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
Eight in favor, one absent.
Thank you. Moving on to item 21037, town clerk, the 2021 local election early voting option or take up any action relative thereto. I will refer to Council Erica, the chairwoman of Ways and Means, for her recommendation to the full council.
Thank you, President Hume. The Ways and Means Committee, we met last week. And just to give a little bit of a two-sentence summary here, the state legislature authorized vote by mail through December 15th, 2021. Clerk Casey came before us last week and talked with us about this matter. We did budget for vote by mail ballots for the 2021 municipal election. The Ways and Means Committee is sending this to the full council with four members in favor and one opposed. Thank you, President Hume.
Thank you. Clerk Casey, you wish to -- come on up.
Good evening and thanks for having me here this evening. My purpose this evening is to provide members of the council an overview of the legislative changes in voting, available voting options, and to provide a recommendation on early voting by mail. On July 29th, Governor Baker extended the provisions of Chapter 255 of the Acts of 2020 through December 15th of 2021. This Act extends voting options instituted last August during the declared state of emergency related to COVID and provides a mechanism for municipalities to modify early voting options. Basically, there are two voting options, mandated and non-mandated. Mandated options include Election Day and absentee. To qualify to vote on Election Day, one must be a registered voter by 8:00 PM on October 13, 2021. To qualify to vote by absentee, again, you must be registered by 8:00 PM October 13th. But you must meet one of these conditions. First one is be away from the city or town on Election Day. Having a disability that keeps you from voting at your polling location. Every religious belief that prevents you from voting at your polling location on Election Day. And added since COVID, taking precautions related to the COVID or have been instructed by a medical professional or health official to self-quarantine in their home within one week of the election. If you qualify, you can vote in absentee ballot by mail or in person. If a voter qualifies under one of the last two exceptions, they can request an emergency The second category of voting is non-mandated and is known as early voting. Early voting basically is a mirror image of absentee voting with one big difference. That being absentee voters must have an excuse, while no excuse is needed for early voting. And there are two types of early voting. It's by mail and in person. The state by classifying early voting as non-mandated places the financial burden of this voter option at the municipal level. Subsection C of this Act allows early voting by mail for any municipal election held on or before December 15th. However, under a new subsection to Chapter 255 of this Act, subsection 55N, a provision to opt-out of early voting by mail for municipal election is available to the town council by holding a public hearing and then taking a public and recorded vote not to provide early voting by mail. Again, this hearing must be held within 45 days prior to the date of the election. This opt-out option was not available in 2020. Subsection L of this Act allows early voting in person for any municipal election held before December 15th. Unlike the opt-out option for early voting by mail, early voting in person is an opt-in option, which requires the local election official to recommend in-person early voting to the council, with members of the council to vote not less than five business days prior to the beginning of early voting. This opt-in option was not available for the September 26 special election we held. With regard to early voting in person, since the change in government in 2008, voter turnout for local elections without a mayor's race has trended downwards, with 1 in 4 registered voters casting a ballot in 2009 and has fallen to a low of 14% when it was last held in 2017. Based on early voting in person data from the 2016 and 2020 presidential elections, early voting in person did not increase voter turnout. It has been found to serve as a convenience for voters to avoid the anticipated long lines at the polls during this historically high election. My early estimates for voter turnout for the November 2nd local election is 20% and includes the ability to cast a vote early by mail. Data from the September 2020 local special election where early voting by mail was the only early voting option available showed approximately 45% of those ballots were cast early by mail. On that warm Saturday, approximately 100 voters per hour cast a ballot at each of the three voting centers. That translates into 25 voters per precinct. On November 2nd, voters will have the flexibility to cast a ballot early by mail, by absentee ballot, and on Election Day. Earlier mentioned trend data for this upcoming type of election strongly suggests manageable lines and does not support a need for early voting in person. I have the responsibility to make members of the council aware of the provisions of Chapter 255 as it relates to the early voting and to provide a recommendation as defined under this Act as the person responsible for overseeing the elections. I acknowledge early voting by mail is an administrative challenge and is very costly. However, it proved itself as a viable option for all voters regardless of the demographic makeup of the voter. And for that reason, my recommendation to this committee would not to exercise the early voting by mail opt-out option, as it is described in the provisions of Chapter 255. Early voting in person has proved itself as a convenient voting option in its true value lies in reducing waiting lines on Election Day. Voters have the option to vote early in person by requesting an absentee ballot and by casting that ballot right here in this auditorium. Option to cast a ballot during the November 2nd are plentiful and available data does not forecast a significant turnout on Election Day. And for this reason, I will not be making a recommendation to opt-in as defined in Section 55L of the Acts of 2020. There'll be no actions required by the council regarding for early voting in person. However, it's up to the council whether they want to have early voting by mail for this upcoming election. My recommendation is that you include it and do not opt for the opt-out option.
Okay. Any questions, comments from the council on this? Council Mackin, go ahead.
Thank you, Clerk Casey. And you know, as always, you have very detailed presentations. You know, Alash, I'm going to vote against this in my reason of being, you know, we've expanded our absentee ballot options to take COVID-related concerns into consideration. And also, you know, as you said, there's unfortunately not as many people do vote as they should. But there's not going to be long lines at the next election, most likely. And therefore, that does kind of reduce the argument for doing this. So that's my comment on the matter.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I do have a -- sorry. Council Ringus, go ahead.
Thank you, Clerk Casey, for your presentation. So I just want to make -- I know when I first read all this, I think it was a little confusing. So I just want to make sure everyone is sort of on the same page with this. And I'll get to the motion in a second, just so we can clarify. Oh, you can clarify that? Okay. But now you're obviously absentee, regular voting still applies, absentee with the added COVID additional pieces. You're just -- you've opted, you want us to allow, I'll just say, I'll use the word allow. You want us to allow for mail-in voting, but you're not proposing, so it's not before so it's not before us, this, the ability to do early voting in person.
That's correct.
And I know there is an additional cost with the mail-in voting. So what was your reasoning, just because I'm curious, to not, to allow for the mail-in voting, but not to allow for the early voting in person?
Okay, for the early voting by mail, the early voting by mail is a process which the voter themselves will need to notify the town clerk's office through an application that they want to have a ballot mailed to their home. Okay? This has proved to be a viable option, that it reached out to any type of voter, no matter what issues they may or may not have, and that they could receive a ballot, fill it out at the comfort of their home during this healthcare crisis. And to me, that has worked very effectively. It provides a safe haven for voters who still are unsure to go to the polling locations or even come into Town Hall. Because what I observed a year ago, in-person voting early here at Town Hall, it was down from previous levels. It was very vibrant in the first two years that we had it, but everybody was still, kind of had that apprehension because of the COVID and with the new Delta variant and the concerns there. I don't see them coming in. In addition, the value which early voting in person has is not to drive voters to the polling location and increase voter turnout. It was just a simple convenient factor that people said, hey, I don't want to get stuck in a long line on Election Day. I'm busy, I have a million things to do, so I'll do it early. It was very effective, and that shot into the line. For this particular election, though, all election, in my opinion, are important, and I wish people will prove me wrong on my 20% estimate, but there's not much advertising in this type of election. You don't see advertising on TV or in the newspapers, and it's very low-key. Historical trends have supported that theory. And having 20%, it's about 5,500 voters, if I have even a third of those voters vote early by mail or by absentee voters, I'm looking at, you know, maybe 15 voters per precinct per hour. I'm spending nearly $30,000 in salaries to bring that staff in, and I have to bring those in, there's no option. I cannot see spending money on something that's not going to generate a high turnout. We're under a very cost-conscious budget this year. If I can save $6,000 to $7,000, it's my obligation to inform you of it. And unfortunately, I wasn't able to deliver my share of the cutbacks because of the elections, and this is a portion of what I'm trying to do, is make my contribution to that decreased budget.
And just, just kind of a follow-up. So with the absentee ballot, can you go over really quick again? What are the two COVID sort of, there was two COVID nuances, correct?
Okay, the first COVID exception is if you have any concerns whatsoever that if you go out and I'm afraid of COVID, you can claim that exemption. Okay? So if you're an individual who wears a mask, even when the levels were low, I'd suggest take that option and vote.
Right.
The other option is if you happen to be ill the week before the election, a doctor or the healthcare professional like the healthcare nurse downstairs says that you're going to be stationed at your house, confined to your home, the week before election, you can ask anyone to pick up a ballot for you. Typically, on absentee ballots and early voting ballots, we cannot give a person to bring it home to someone else. This is the one exception. And during the November 2020 election last year, we had three individuals who came down with COVID just before the election. They showed up with the application to get a ballot, which we gave to that person then to carry home, which they had to carry, bring back to us by 8 o'clock that night. Now, with the COVID, we're all concerned with it here, my staff, that COVID, we sprayed that thing with Lysol every way, shape, and form, and then we put it in a safe location until we felt that it was comfortable, so we could open it up to tally that ballot for the next election. And these are concerns for us, the employees too. So they're a viable option. I think what we have on the table, what I'm presenting on the table, is adequate option for people to vote, especially for the size of this election.
So I mean, to me, it's, the COVID, it's kind of a catch-all. If you have, if you have any sort of fear of COVID or going out, you can use the absentee ballot option. So I mean, they're kind of one in the same, whether, I mean, so it's, it's almost a moot sort of vote in my mind, but I mean, I would hope that folks who are comfortable voting would come out and vote, because I think it is something that we lose. I think the, I understand convenience, but I think the ability for folks to get out, meet other folks in town, and vote, cast their ballot in person is an important part of the process. But understanding that there is various variants that people still feel for love, and some folks aren't fully vaccinated yet, I understand. So to me, though, it just, it seems kind of like a moot vote, because you could just use the absentee catch-all anyway.
True. And one important thing on early absentee voting, you check off the box, we are prohibited from challenging you that you're going to be out of town, or you have a religious belief or anything like that. You sign the documents stating to that fact. So it's essentially early voting.
Right.
You know, the Town Clerk Association has advocated to eliminate one of the two. Just expand absentee voting like early voting, or get rid of absentee voting, and just make it by mail. But we've lost every turn.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, Clerk Casey, for being here before us and explaining.
Council President.
Oh, sorry, Council Sasha, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Clerk Casey. So I just, you've come before us with a few voting issues, and the last one was about consolidation and making, prolonging the temporary consolidation to three locations, which I supported at the time because that was April or May. There was no way to predict then what the November election would look like. I'm glad that the council voted to continue the temporary consolidation, just because who would have thought in April or May that we'd still be doing the same thing as the last election? And I feel like this is a similar question that's being put before us. It's, it's not a question about permanent changes, it's about what we're going to do for this November's election, and I think, given the uncertainty that still hangs in the air, even just two months before the election, having this extra option for voters is prudent, and I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Clerk Casey, for being before us and for the thorough explanation. I trust your opinion. I trust you do what's right for your staff and department and for all the residents, so I am going to be supporting this. I also trust the recommendation coming out of the Ways and Means and all their work and due diligence on this. I do have a statement from Council Connors, who could not be here with us tonight. She would like this read into the record as it pertains to Order 21037. Again, this is from Council Connors. This is a quote, "I was the one person who voted nay to opt out for the mail-in voting. During discussions of the Ways and Means Committee meeting, it was relayed that the absentee ballot had been modified to allow persons with concerns of COVID to vote by absentee ballot. This option has been added to the reasons for voting absentee. Utilization of two system adds confusion as to whether a person should use a mail-in versus absentee ballot. The process in which to obtain a mail-in or absentee ballot is the same procedure. The absentee ballot covers all aspects of the mail ballot, is a duplicate function, and is not necessarily for this voting sessions." End quote. Again, that was from Council Connors. So I just want to clarify that the recommendation from Clerk Casey and from the Council, from the Committee on Ways and Means, is a yea vote on the motion, which Council Ringus will read. So if you support the motion and support what Counselor, Clerk Casey has presented to us tonight, and a favorable recommendation from Ways and Means, you are going to be voting yea, and that will be, yea for early voting by mail will be available to voters during the November 2nd election. A nay vote, which goes against and does not support Clerk Casey or the favorable recommendation from Ways and Means, a nay vote is for early voting by mail will not be available to voters during the November 2nd election. Any questions on how you are voting? Everyone clear?
Yep.
Okay. Council Ringus, for the motion.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that upon the recommendation of the town clerk, the town of Braintree, to the Braintree Town Council will not exercise the early voting by mail opt-out provision for municipal elections as defined in Chapter 255 of the Acts of 2020, Section 55N.
Second.
Has been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan. Clerk Sumino, roll call vote, please. Council Barrika.
Yes.
Council Connors is absent. Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Hume?
Aye.
Council Mackin?
No.
Council O'Brien?
Aye.
Council Ringus?
Aye.
Council Ryan?
Aye.
Council Sasha?
Yes.
Is it seven in favor? One absent. One, no, sorry.
And that passes.
Thank you kindly, and everybody have a great night.
You're welcome. Thank you, Clerk Casey. Moving item, moving on to Item 21040, the mayor authorization of five-year lease agreement at golf course or take up any action relative there to. I will refer to Council Barrika, the chairwoman of Ways and Means, for your recommendation to the full council.
Thank you, President Hume. We've, we've been busy at Ways and Means, and we met last week. We are sending the five-year lease agreement on the golf carts to the full council with a unanimous favorable recommendation. A few things we talked about at the Ways and Means Committee meeting, which may not have been in all of the documentation, and I wanted to let residents at home know as well. So the lease on the golf carts will also come with some significant upgrades for golfers. So some of these include USB ports, a new GPS component with 10-inch video screens on each cart, which provide the golfer with real-time overview of each hole, the distance to hit for their next shot. And the new carts also come with benefits of the course itself, including higher efficiency engines and cart control, which instantly creates boundaries on the golf course as to where the golf carts can drive. So that really will help us keeping the carts off the muddy areas of the course. So wanted to make sure folks had that information as well.
Thank you, Council Barrika. Anybody from the mayor's office? I know we have Director Arsenal here with us and Golf Superintendent Darren Brown. Council Ryan first, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm going to support this item. I think it's, I'm a golfer, and having this type of technology on a golf cart is something that we absolutely need at the golf course, and it's not something nice to have, it's something that we should have already had in place, and I commend the staff for getting it up there. And I'm going to have these carts that will have the GPS built into the cart, and it's very good for the golf course, as Meredith mentioned, that you have control where the cart can go, and you can eliminate a lot of damage in sensitive areas of the course. So I think this is a great idea. I commend the staff, and I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Stallman, welcome again.
Thank you. The request before you tonight is to allow us to enter into a five-year contract for leasing of the golf carts. The current state statute allows the town only to enter into a three-year contract without going to the Town Council for their approval for specific contracts over a three-year period. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to.
When does this lease take effect? Like, when will the new carts come on?
What happens is this would be, the contract would be for the golf season beginning next June. It would be funding, the appropriation would be for fiscal year '23. What happened was, back in 2017, we had come to the council in February for this four- or five-year contract. At that time, there was a two-month period from ordering to delivery. And right now, we're being told it's approximately six months. So that's why we're coming here early to ask for this, so that we can get them ordered, so we can get them delivered in time.
Okay. Anybody else? I want to echo the sentiments of Council Ryan. I also golf, and I've played at a golf course that has these particular type of carts, and not being familiar with this golf course, it did keep me off the areas. The cart literally stops, and we put so much time and effort and money into maintaining our golf course, so this is a great asset to have to, for those who may not be familiar with the course and not knowing where to drive, where not to drive. It's a, it's a great feature. Like, I was impressed, frustrated but impressed when I first used that type of cart. But yeah, again, great, great add to it. So thank you to all those who are involved. Any additions? Council Sasha.
Thank you, Madam President. Just to repeat myself from the committee meeting, you've adequately made the case that a five-year contract makes more sense than a three-year contract, and the GPS upgrades make sense, and you can increase the revenue, but we had talked about getting an update on the current state of the golf course and where we are, and maybe, if possible, a projection. Do we have any update?
We're still in the process of closing the books, and I will be back to you with that information at a later date.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Council Ryan.
And I want to commend you for being here early, asking for it six months in advance, because the world we live in now, there's a shortage of everything, and taking that into consideration and having that line of communication with the manufacturer is a great job, and it's well done.
Darren does a great job at the golf course. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, is there a motion? Council Ringus.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 30B, Section 12B, that the town, acting through the director of golf operations and under the direction of the mayor, be authorized to enter into a five-year lease purchase agreement for golf carts for the '20 to '22, 2026 golf seasons.
Second.
Has been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan. Clerk Sumino, a roll call vote, please. Council Barrika?
Yes.
Council Connors is absent. Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Hume?
Aye.
Council Mackin?
Aye.
Council O'Brien?
Aye.
Council Ringus?
Aye.
Council Ryan?
Aye.
Council Sasha?
Yes.
Is it eight in favor? One absent. Is she unanimous? Thank you. New business? We have none tonight, so we'll be moving on to referrals to the Committee on Ways and Means. We have a few. Council Ringus, for those motions.
Thank you, Madam President. I would refer to the Committee on Ways and, or move to refer to the Committee on Ways and Means, 21041, Town Clerk, polling locations or taking up any action relative there to. 21043, Mayor, CPA appropriation, request for appropriation improvement design services at Hollis Field in Watson Park. And 21044, Mayor, CPA appropriation, request for appropriation shoreline stabilization and flood control project at Watson Park.
Second.
Has been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan. Clerk Sumino, a roll call vote, please. Council Barrika?
Yes.
Council Connors is absent. Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Hume?
Aye.
Council Mackin?
Aye.
Council O'Brien?
Aye.
Council Ringus?
Aye.
Council Ryan?
Aye.
Council Sasha?
Yes.
Eight in favor, one absent. Is she unanimous? Thank you. And one referral to the Committee on the Department of Public Works. Council Ringus.
I'd move that we refer to the Committee of Department of Public Works, 21042, resident petition gas installation, 100 Adam Street, or take up any action relative there to.
Second.
Has been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan. Council Barrika?
Yes.
Council Connors is absent. Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Hume?
Aye.
Council Mackin?
Aye.
Council O'Brien?
Nay.
Council Ringus?
Aye.
Council Ryan?
Aye.
Council Sasha?
Yes.
Seven in favor, one opposed, one absent. Thank you. Okay, our next meeting will be Tuesday, September 21st, 2021, at 7:30. Just want to thank the members of B-CAM, Wes Ray, Bill Needham, and Jerry Comick, and for all of those working at B-CAM. Because B-CAM studio is at Braintree High School, they could not work in their office with the power outages, so they might not have been able to televise our meeting tonight, but fortunately, through all their hard work and commitment, they got it up and running through their extra hard work. Just want to thank them, and we were streaming live, I should have mentioned this, early in the night, on YouTube and on the B-CAM channel. Where was that? So thank you to all of them, thank you to all you who tuned in at home. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
Has been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan. Clerk Sumino, a roll call vote, please. Council Barrika?
Yes.
Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Hume?
Aye.
Council Mackin?
Aye.
Council O'Brien?
Aye.
Council Ringus?
Aye.
Council Ryan?
Aye.
Council Sasha?
Yes.
All in favor to adjourn? We are adjourned. Good night, everybody.[1766.61]